Okay, we'll call it to order this August the 24th, 2016 meeting of the Franklin County Commission. Roll call.
Commissioner Waymire.
Present.
Commissioner Renaud.
Present.
Chair Howard.
Present.
Commissioner Harris. Commissioner Dunn.
Present.
You'll all stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance and please remain standing for the invocation that will be led by Reverend Scott Dickinson.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. Let's pray. Lord, we thank you again for another beautiful morning. Thank you for the rain and, Lord, we just pray this morning that you be with our kids as they're back to school, be with our teachers and the support people, watch over them. We continue to pray for our law enforcement and EMS and all those who serve us in that way. Lord, thank you for our commissioners and for our county leaders and, Lord, we pray that you help them. Just continue to be with them as they make decisions, help them be wise and understanding. And, Lord, just watch over our families, watch over the families of our county who are struggling right now. Help us as we reach out to them. But, Lord, help us to do something good every day and to love you and to take care of each other. We ask in Christ's name. Amen. That takes us correspondence and organizational business. John?
Commissioners, we have a couple things, a few things this morning. One of the things that I'd like to do is bring our community partners in to have them give them a, give you a mid-year update on different things that they have going on, anything that they're seeing as they're carrying out their business. One of the things that, even though we're not sponsoring the Swan Arts Festival for the 2016 budget year, we've asked Meg to come in and give an update as to their event that they held this year because we are sponsoring them next year. So, just want to give you that information. And then also from the Services for the Elderly. And the last thing is that Nick Robbins has an award and recognition to take care of. So, Meg?
Well, good morning, Commissioners. Thank you so much for giving me an opportunity to share with you this morning. First and foremost, I'm here to say thank you for the funds that you've allocated to the Swan Arts Foundation for the 2017 budget year. As a completely volunteer organization, that contribution is extremely significant to us and has a lot of value. And so, we want to thank you for that. And then also, I wanted to provide just kind of a recap to you of how this year's Swan Arts Festival went and then highlight just a couple things about the organization since this is the first time that we're going to be partnering together. So, just a little background to myself and the reason that I'm involved with the Swan Arts Foundation. As I grew up in a small farming community about 100 miles south of here in Greenwood County, and since I was about this big, been singing in church and music was something that just always connected and resonated with me. And I wanted, as an adult, to find ways that I could help people find something that resonated with them as well. And the arts is not just what hangs on a wall. It takes a lot of different forms. But, the conversation of the Swan Arts Festival began as a conversation in 2013 as wanting to reinvigorate something that had been gone from Franklin County for a while, the essence of a community festival where the community could come together for free and families could come out and enjoy art, music, and the community. And so, it started in 2013 as a conversation. In 2014, we established the Swan Arts Foundation as a 501(c)(3) and now here we are today. So, on the back, I provided a sheet to you. On the back of that sheet, you'll see an area that says "Buy the numbers" and this is just a glance at this year's festival. So, we approximate just under 1,500 people attended the festival this year and the cost to those families to participate is $0. And the reason that we can do that is because of the generous partners that you see there outlined on the right side of your sheet. We are so grateful to all of them that allow us to put the festival on for free as there's a tremendous number of people that live in Franklin County and kiddos for sure, some of them who will never leave Franklin County. And so, for us to be able to bring top-notch art opportunities for them to experience right here in our own community is just invaluable to us. And we're very excited to be adding the county to that list of partners in 2017. As I mentioned before, at this time, although we'd like to grow to the point where we do have paid staff, at this time, we have no paid staff. So, the Swan Arts is completely 100% volunteer-led. So, your contribution 100% supports advancing the arts in Franklin County. So, we, again, thank you for that. This year, we had 49 artists, artisan, and informational booths who participated in the festival. That's everything from woodwork to metalwork, jewelry, pottery, visual art, and then community groups that joined alongside of us. 61% of those 49 reside in Franklin County, which is awesome. Sometimes I hear people talk about we don't have artists living in Franklin County and that's absolutely inaccurate. 67 volunteers during the festival weekend. We have been so fortunate to, in this community, there are so many people who are willing to give their time and energy and over festival weekend donated over 350 hours of their time to help carry that out. And we are so appreciative of that. And then 20-plus community groups that participated. Examples of organizations that participated would be Big Brothers Big Sisters, Willow Domestic Violence Center, CASA, Imagine Art Club, and the list goes on and on. And again, we value those community partnerships tremendously. And then 101 artists and musicians who performed over the festival weekend. If you, if you had a chance to pop down to City Park, maybe you got to experience some of those. And if not, we certainly invite you next year. And then just a reintroduction of our organization. As I mentioned before, in October of 2014, we became a 501(c)(3) organization. And outlined below there are just the goals for our organization that I wanted to share with you. To facilitate arts education and enrichment in Franklin County, which includes the continuation of the Swan Arts Festival. To highlight and develop local and regional artists. To be a catalyst for arts-based economic growth and job creation. To collaborate with cultural, economic, governmental, and educational entities to extend the reach of the arts and to help improve the quality of life in Ottawa and Franklin County. We chose the name Swan Arts because we wanted to stay connected to the heritage of Franklin County and the Meridaean River that runs through here means Marsh of the Swan. But, we also wanted to not limit ourselves to Ottawa and wanted to be able to think of ourselves as a regional event and a foundation that would extend its reach beyond the community in which we reside. I know it has, so we started this conversation in 2013 and we've been putting feet forward to try to advance it, but truly feel like we've only scratched the surface of the imprint that arts and humanities and culture can create in our community. And so, we, again, thank you for that partnership in helping us to move this forward. I know tourism has been a big conversation over the last couple months. And I just want to let you know that we believe truly as an organization and I as an individual that the arts have the power to be an economic driver in our community. The nonprofit arts industry alone generates $135 billion in economic activity in our nation. And art travelers are ideal tourists. They typically spend more and stay longer than the average tourist, even spending double what someone who lives in our community would spend when they come out to an event like the Swan Arts Festival. So, yes, with that, again, I just want to say thank you for taking the initiative to partner with us for 2017. We are delighted to have you as a partner next year.
Any questions for Meg?
Just had one comment. All our art people and craftspeople in the county, one of the difficult things they find is how do they merchandise their products and that sort of thing. So, it's appreciative that you have this opportunity for them to take part in the art festival and show their crafts and skills.
Thank you, Roy.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
The next is a update from Services for the Elderly, Sharon Geis.
Don Higdon is with me. He's the chairman of the board of the Franklin County Services for the Elderly. And I think Janet handed you a couple of sheets that are year-to-date. Excuse me, I'm getting over something. This first one shows you our ridership. If you go down there on the left hand, it tells you a breakdown of who we give rides to, whether it's elderly, disabled, or general public, and then total. And you can see there, in 2016, we are on track to increase the number of miles we've driven and the number of rides we've provided by about 10% in 2016. The board did vote this last meeting to add the VA Medical Clinic in Garnett to the list of places they will go to for medical needs by our, we use our self-owned vehicles. If we take KDOT vehicles out of the county for any reason, then we have to take them out for every reason. And we have elected not to do that in order to keep people shopping in Franklin County and so forth. But, we do use those vehicles that we own ourselves to go out of county for medical necessities. In 2015, as you probably experienced, we saved a bundle of money on gasoline. So, we do have a little bit of extra money in our budget this year. We currently have about $41,000 in our equipment fund. We have to, when we get a new vehicle through KDOT, we have to pay 10% of the cost of that vehicle, which usually is around $12,000 or $15,000 because they are all handicapped accessible. When we replace the vehicles that we own, it will be more than that, I'm sure, because, again, we will make sure that that is handicapped accessible, whether that is an electronic lift or a ramp. We also provide match money to the Area Agency on Aging and Mid-America Nutrition Program. And Mid-America, well, they both come in monthly and give us a report. And so, I did give you a copy of the most recent report we got from Mid-America Nutrition. Mid-America did make some changes recently in Franklin County. The nutrition site in Pomona was closed for about six months, but they have been able to get that reopened. I believe the problem there was they were having trouble finding someone to take the position of site manager. The Ottawa Senior Center has struggled and floundered and, and Mid-America made the decision to move the nutrition site in Ottawa from the Ottawa Senior Center to Washburn Towers. Years ago, when Washburn Towers was remodeled, there was discussion at that time about moving the senior center there. You know, they have a swimming pool, they have a place to work out and so forth. And the new director, who's been there just about two months now, I think, might be a little longer than that, made the decision to go ahead and make that change. July was their first month and they believed that all of the people that had been eating at the Ottawa Senior Center did migrate over to Washburn Towers. So, they don't think they've lost any individuals in that move. Of course, the people that get home-delivered meals, which is the largest part of what they do in Ottawa, they didn't notice any change. I think that Mid-America continues to make some adjustments to make that work for them. But, we, we, the Services for the Elderly Board, did take the rent we were paying at the Ottawa Senior Center and are now paying that to Washburn Towers in order to have that nutrition site there. Do you have any questions for me? And Don, do you have anything you'd like to add?
We will cover it. There's a better speaker than I am.
How are you for volunteers for meals on board?
I really can't answer that. Of course, I was affiliated with Mid-America for years, but they always need volunteers. I think I could safely say that.
Well, as we said back during the budget talks, that we appreciate, I know that expenses go up and it's tougher and tougher to do, but you're still able to do your services and stay down as close to flat on the budget as you did this year. So, we appreciate that. I know it's getting harder to do it.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you, Sis.
Thank you.
Nick?
Good morning, Commissioner.
Good morning.
This morning, I want to talk to you guys a little bit about a very good thing that happened in our community not too long ago. I want to start out by talking about what we're doing. Two years ago, we started an award program within our service where we recognized Call of the Year, code saves, those kinds of things that really highlight what we do, provide feedback to our crews and let them feel like they're doing a good job and recognize that. Also, about 10 years ago, we started an AED program in our community. And right now, we have over 50 AEDs in our community. I had a phone call yesterday from two companies or places that looking at adding four more AEDs. So, the importance of AEDs will be shown today and what we're going to talk about. The last thing, American Heart Association really pushed hard for community training, community CPR, and getting laypeople involved in, in the CPR programs. With that, American Eagle was one of the businesses we've worked with on and off throughout the last few years. They have a very good safety team out there who are trained well and have AEDs to hand to the available to them. On July 30th, it was a normal day out at American Eagle when one of their coworkers went down. It was witnessed and four coworkers decided that they could, they would act. There are members of the safety committee out there. They're trained in CPR, AED, and first aid. When they got to the patient, they found that patient not breathing with no pulse. They applied the AED, shocked the patient one time, and started CPR. The patient did have a spontaneous return of a pulse and breathing and is alive today due to the selfless acts that they did. They are a good representation of what American Heart Association, us, our community education programs are pushing for in our community. And it's nice to be able to have the opportunity to award them and show the appreciation and hope in the years to come, we'll have many more of these awards because it's people like that, with the laypeople out there, starting at CPR, we're going to save a lot more lives. When our crews got there, the patient was still in an responsive state, was transported to the hospital and released a few days later, alive and stable and a good prognosis. So, is what we want to do today is just take a few minutes to give a lifesaving award to the four individuals from American Eagle who did take action and save this person's life. So, if you guys would join with me today, we'll have Scott and Liz, who were the two crew members on the scene, come up and they can hand the awards out as I read their names off. The first member is Eugene Golden. Adam Manthe.
Standing back with the Commissioners, I'd like to get a pitch cap.
Yeah, everybody sign up for. Okay, that takes us to public comment. A citizen desiring to speak on an item not on the agenda may do so at this time. Discussion is limited to five minutes and the Commission will not take action or discuss items at this time. Discussion should be limited to matters of county commission business and public comment is not permitted in regard to personnel matters or on pending legal matters. Items introduced under public comment may become agenda items at a later date.
Gene Hurt, 107 Jefferson Street in Pomona, Kansas. First thing I want to say is, since we're not allowed, I guess, have public comment under some of these people that were up here talking before this started, like with the, on the, how the, on aging, I think a few comments need to be made. I think those people are going to find a job, what they do, for public transportation as well as for nutrition. And I know that I am a total favor of that position and for all that they do and what they're, what they're accomplishing. And I hope that the Commission will continue to give them the money and budget they need. The second thing is, since I see that's not on the agenda for us to talk, so, and I'll bring it up now, since on Monday, I appreciate you, Colton Waymire, for expressing to me from the people that were here on the industrial park. Okay? Now, I see there are representatives here from the city today and Commissioners from there. So, I'll tell you why I made the statement I did, Colton, when you asked me on those people if I got all the straight answers. Okay? With the industrial park as I see it, many years ago, the banks would not allow anything to be built on, quote, flood plain. But, that's changed. Okay, good. And I hope the industrial park will work to what they, what you want it to be. But, if you're so sure, or they are, that there's not going to be no flooding out there, then why don't the city and the county put in the contract, whoever goes out there, that we can guarantee that it will never flood to bother you? If you do that, then you might have more people that would be interested in coming to the industrial park. For that reason, I still think it's a problem. And there's people out there just like me that think it will because it's still on the maps. So, you know, that's, that's my part on that, the way I feel. And, but I appreciate those comments that you wanted to ask me if I got my questions answered and I didn't. So, but I hope that it will work out. Thank you.
Takes us to the consent agenda. Today, there's quite a bit on the consent agenda. There are a couple items that were added to it that were discussed at the Bundy Study Session. They're put on the consent agenda so all this can be done with one motion and one vote without separate motions and votes for each item. First item needs to be considered and approved are the Franklin County Commission meeting minutes for August the 17th, 2016, and the Franklin County Study Session minutes for August the 22nd, 2016, to consider and approve tax change orders in the amount of a minus $842.30. To approve the fiscal year 2016 year-end outcome report, the fiscal year 2017 adult carryover reimbursement budget, fiscal year 2017 juvenile carryover reimbursement budget, fiscal year 2017 revised behavioral health grant budget. And also, to consider approving, it states the lowest bid to purchase replacement Baco. Actually, the bid was not the lowest. It's a bid from Caterpillar for $121,000, which in the study session was discussed and decided that that would be the best bid for the county. So, if there's no questions on the study or the consent agenda, we'd look for a motion to approve the consent agenda. Have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is a second.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes. Okay, takes us to items of business. The first item is consideration of a contribution to the City of Ottawa for the teen park.
Commissioners, this was something that the City Commission, Mayor Kahler, and others brought this to you, this request, to you in the, in the amount of $5,000. And that was something that you wanted to discuss further. And so, we've put it on the agenda for you to discuss and make determination how much you would like to contribute or if you would like to contribute to this project and how much.
Okay.
And also, members of the City of Ottawa are here. And so, if you have any questions or anything that you would like to ask them.
Okay. Well, I'll start off because I talked to you about this after you had talked with the city and I guess informed them that we would be contributing. A couple issues I had with this was the fact that it was brought to us the way it was in an open meeting without us even knowing anything about this. It's a sizable contribution, in my opinion. I know this has been going on for a long time. I would have rather seen us brought in on this before and let us know that this was going on and see, ask us if we'd like to be a part of this possibly and contribute or come on board with this thing. I felt that bringing it to us and asking for $5,000 right up front in an open meeting kind of put us on the spot. I'm not against this in any way, shape, or form. I definitely think we need more things like this. I'm not against this by any means. My other issue I had a little bit with this is the fact that we had just come out of a budget hearings. We just approved a budget where we had to raise our mill levy, a small, small raise, but we did have to raise our mill levy. And then to follow that up with a $5,000 donation, I felt was kind of a, kind of rough. And I thought possibly, in my opinion, maybe half of that or something this year and look at maybe contribute again next year, the other half if the budget so is allowed. That's my opinion. I will say that I will support the other Commissioners on this. If they are okay with this amount or they feel that that amount is appropriate, I'll support what they think on it.
I'll ask John about putting this request in our budget. How do we do that?
There is dollars that are available this year of, out of the budget, out of the Commission budget to make this without any issues.
Can you speak specifically to line item or where it would come from?
That, there would probably be out of excess funds or underspent funds, out of the training and travel line items that are, won't be expended. And so, that's, if we, it would, may not come out of those line items. It'd come out of the appropriate line items, but there is excess in other line items where we could make that up without any detriment to services or anything else like that.
And that's, that's assuming that the rest of the year goes as by budget and whatever it is.
And we have budgeted the amount for the ACA, the KAC conference and that sort of thing, so.
Well, I'm not going to be going to the KAC conference, so you can use my part. I think it's a great project. There's a lot of benefits that are going to come out of this, which makes spending or donating a little money of value to the county. You know, we operate a juvenile detention center and I guess half the residents in the county live in the, in the city of Ottawa, too. So there's a lot of value we could see, I think, out of making a donation. I think I'd be happy to make a motion to donate $5,000 this year to the, help with the teen park for the city of Ottawa.
Okay, I have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Have a motion and a second? Yeah?
Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes.
Thank you, commissioners.
Okay, the next item of business will be discussing approved the July 2016 EMS Activity Report.
Good morning again. I thank you for giving us the opportunity. We talked about that and present those awards this morning. For July, we had 313 calls, which is a new record for Franklin County, bringing us to 2,000 calls even to the end of July, which is 208 calls over where we were last year. Deposits to 80,892.56. Adjustments to $48,008.88. And we submit, or sent 10,867.49 to the set-off program, 2,0542 Midwest Collections, and had a total invoices of our service fees of 156,938.0 and 21 move-ups. So, as you can see with that report, we are busy. We are getting pretty good revenues right now. Our insurance, stuff like that's paying. We did, Pam attended a meeting out in Mulvane last week where Blue Cross talks about our revenue rates, that kind of stuff. And with that, we did find that probably next year, first of all, next year, we'll be needing to look at raising our fees a little bit. How we do that is, if we're right at the margin, so let's say Medicare pays $450 for a transport, and we're getting $450, and that's what we bill, we need to raise that a little bit. So there's a little bit of margin to keep pushing those Medicare fees up. So we'll be talking about that at the end of the year, but that's where we're at. The last page, page five, we transported 205 patients to hospital. We took one patient home. We did use a helicopter for the first time this year. It was a much needed out in rural county. So we had 65 refusals for a total of 20.77% refusal rate, which with 313 calls, that's pretty good. Any questions on that report?
You talk about bumping up fees for service and to stay ahead of Medicare, I think should be explained that even at that, we're not recouping the full cost to provide that service.
Yes.
Your department, though, a lot of it does recoup, is recouped from service fees, is still partially taxpayer-funded. So I guess it should, I think it should be pointed out, so just anybody who hears that, we're not raising it just to raise that, to take more money from the federal or state government, I guess, in that case, but because indeed we're just trying to get closer to capturing what it actually costs us to provide the service, so.
Exactly. If you look at medical costs, honestly, over the past couple of years, up enough from which we used to be able to buy for $3, it's now costing us $30 for a vial. That's one of the most used drugs we use on cardiac arrest. Normal saline, as you guys remember, a few years ago, we had a nationwide shortage of it. It went from $4 to $5 a bag up to $40. You know, so we saw, we see a big fluctuation in the medical system as it is and the operating costs and all that. So, point it out, we are half-funded taxes, the other half is dependent on our revenues, and it's responsible for us to keep those, those rates where they need to be to get the maximum returns.
But we also provide the best ambulance service in the state. At least that's what the award says, right?
I was told the other day, and I don't want to toot a horn, but between Med Act and Franklin County, there's one of the two best services to work for. So that's a pretty good feather in our hat.
Good.
Where did the helicopter come from?
It came from Lawrence.
Came from Lawrence?
Yeah. We used LiveStar Lawrence on that transport. And honestly, I know it was a car wreck, but I don't know the exact details off the top of my head about what the whole thing was, but I know it was rural. And it was, we do evaluate helicopter transports. As you guys know, when I took over 10 years ago, we were flying 40 to 50 patients a year. And with our services, with increasing our skill knowledge for our crews, we are able to transport a lot of those by ground, which is a cost-saving, not only of the patient, but for us, too. And with ransom now achieving the trauma delegation that they have, and, you know, you look at, you look at our transfer data, which is, is on there, we're still running about the same amount of transfers we were when we were running 200 calls a year. So we're not seeing a big shift to patients being sent out of here. They're keeping more of them and able to do that. So it's been a good thing, which is good, because just two days ago, I guess it was Monday, we had five trucks out at one time. So good thing we had the fifth one. So it's, it's picking up and we're seeing a, a lot of changes in the way we do stuff.
How's the European-style ambulance?
What's that?
How's the Freightliner ambulance?
Oh, actually, it's really nice. The, it rides pretty smooth. It's a great transfer truck. We are seeing the benefits of having that to do the transports. If you guys haven't seen it, encourage you to come by. It does have the forward-facing seat, some of the better safety features in it. So the crews seem to like it. It is, like we talked about, we have had to run it on 911 calls. It's cramped if you have to get, get busy with a patient, but other than that, it does great for what it's made for.
Well, thank you for that report, Nick.
You want to?
Any more questions for Nick?
Need a motion for the?
Yep. No, I would look for a motion to approve the July 2016 EMS Activity Report.
Go move.
Have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second. John?
Commissioner Dunn? Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes.
And the last thing I got, I forgot what was down there. KMSA Award, the KMSA Conference was the Kansas EMS Service Association Conference was last weekend where we had the billing conference. As you guys know, we put a lot of work into our heart attack and stroke care. Last year, we achieved the Bronze Award for STEMI care. When you're talking about STEMI, which is a certain type of heart attack, they have to go to a PCI center. cath is really the saving grace for those patients. 100% of our patients in Franklin County that had a STEMI either walked into ransom, what we picked up was in a cath lab in less than 90 minutes. And that's gold standard for your urban areas. Rural America is 120 minutes, so we're rocking that. And with that, we got the Silver Award for Mission Lifeline, which is, there's only four services in the state that got that award this year. We met the requirements for gold, which you have to walk the chains, brown, silver, gold. So next year, we're already working on the paperwork returning to get the Gold Award for that. So when it comes to heart attack care, that kind of stuff, we're, we're doing some good things here.
Great. Congratulations.
Thank you, guys.
Okay. Next item would be approval of a resolution to reestablish the official zoning map for those properties previously shown in the urban growth area, with the exception of the Prairie Paws Animal Shelter property, to be rezoned to I-1.
Good morning, commissioners. As you've indicated, Mr. Chairman, this is an opportunity to rezone the area that was within the urban growth area for the city of Ottawa. I think most of you are familiar with the history associated with this. You elected last December not to renew and extend the inter-local agreement, which authorized the zoning subdivision and billing permit authority to the city of Ottawa for those properties that were identified in the urban growth area. And with that, then, that become effective in June, the end of June this year, that the zoning authority would revert back to the county. After reviewing this matter with our legal counsel, it was determined that our actual zoning had never really gone away. It was released to the city for that, that 10-year period of time. However, our zoning basically still remained with one exception, and that would be the fact that the Prairie Paws Animal Shelter had been developed during that timeframe. And the zoning associated with that for the city had been light industrial. So rather than fix, face a situation where we might create a non-conforming situation, it was better to recognize this with the same zoning that had been in effect with the city. It was also consistent with our comprehensive plan, which showed that entire area then for light industrial activities on both sides of 68 there east of I-35. The planning commission did hold a hearing on this matter because we felt it would be prudent to notify the public and allow them the opportunity, if there were any concerns about the county applying the zoning, which had been in effect in 2006 when the inter-local agreement went into place. We did have a hearing in July with the planning commission, and after reviewing the proposed modifications and one modification, that was the light industrial for the Prairie Paws, the planning commission found that it would be consistent with the county's comprehensive plan, and therefore have made a recommendation to the commissioners to adopt a resolution reestablishing our zoning map and the zoning districts as they were identified in, in 2006. I have nothing further to add unless any of you have questions.
John, what's the resolution number on this? 16 dash?
16.
16 dash 16. Larry, is the, really the only major change in all those properties is the animal shelter?
Yes.
I'm curious, Larry, why industrial for the animal shelter, not commercial, or?
Well, basically, what the city had had was a light industrial type of zoning, and that was also consistent with our comprehensive plan. And the fact that there were other activities along there, they've also included the veterinarian clinic, for one, is a light industrial, which is right next door. Very similar use in, in many respects. So we felt that would be consistent. It didn't really modify anything as far as the structure. And I, I think that there, there is a request now to make some modifications to their building. So they're going to be coming forward with a building permit, and we didn't want to disrupt and have to go through some spatial procedures relative to that.
That allows them to continue business as usual?
Yes. And it will allow for the addition and modifications to their structure that they're proposing.
Any more questions for Larry on this? If not, we'd look for a motion to approve Resolution Number 16 dash 16 to reestablish the official zoning map for those properties previously shown in the urban growth area, with the exception of the Prairie Paws.
Rick, I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt, but you have a public comment on this.
Okay. Jean, remember everything. The public comment section still holds the five minutes and go ahead and come up.
Okay. With that in mind, what Larry just said and, and the resolution now, will those people out here on the south side of town be happy with this, if you pass this resolution? Because the city won't be involved, right? It'll be back to the county. Because if it's not, those people will be red hot again. That's what I'm saying. Just trying to get explained real well here. Thank you.
Good. That's only one. Okay. With that, now we'd look for a motion to approve Resolution Number 16 dash 16.
Go move.
Have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, John?
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes.
Okay. Takes us to staff reports. John?
Commissioners, since we do have the city here, and I spoke with them briefly, we'd like to go ahead and, and do a presentation of the check that they have for the amount that we're going to contribute to them. So if they would like to come up, and if Mayor Kahler would like to say any words.
Good morning. My comments will be brief with you this morning. We do appreciate the sentiments that were expressed here at the table and that you're saying that teens are important and our citizens are important here in our community. Not only the citizens here of Ottawa, but the citizens of all of Franklin County. And so we look forward to partnerships such as this to move forward and to lift up all of our citizens. So thank you for this partnership.
Commissioners, if you'd come down.
Wherever you'd like to go. Well, come on! There you go. As I said, if you can't see me, Commissioner Renaud, can you move over just a, there we go. All right, ready? One, two, three. Thank you. Just shake half the hands. Thank you. Thank you.
I have no other items.
Eric?
Nothing to do.
Eric, anything else to add? Here.
Nothing to add today.
John? Where we at? Nick, anything else? You've been here a lot. Jim? John? Wow. Okay, takes us to commissioner comments and board reports. Roy, you want to start?
I haven't been anywhere.
I told you about the hospital meeting last week, and that's the last thing I went to.
Two weeks ago tonight, I went to a Wellsville City Council meeting, and since then, I've been all over the world. So I, I can't remember what we talked about at that meeting, to be honest with you. I was, I was packing my bags, so I don't know.
Okay, and I have not been to any meetings since our last commission meeting. So with that, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
Go move.
Have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
On favor? Hot. Opposed? Or adjourned?